I'd like to call this special session to order. At this time, Ms. Wecker, sir, please make note that we do have a quorum. We have six board members here. At this time, I'll ask for the invocation by Mr. K. Carroll, followed by the pledge of allegiance by Ms. Lynn Andrews. During the path of the storms that are without power, without water, that you would watch over them, keep them safe. And pray also, Father, that you would be with us and help us as we navigate this pandemic, that we can keep our numbers coming down, that things will get better. Our teachers, our students, and our citizens will be safe. Now be with us in this meeting tonight, that we will be respectful to each other. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Father, of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the agenda.
A move.
Motion by Ms. Sessoms, second by Mr. Wooton. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries six zero. At this time, I'll just remind us of the purpose of this meeting is a special session for the Board to approve a process for filling the vacant board seat and to identify candidates to be interviewed for the seat. Before we get into the process, I would like just to review some general rules of filling the vacancy. The Board has the obligation to fill the vacancy resulting from board members resignation. That's General Statute 115(c) dash 37(f). The Board has not adopted, nor is it subject to, a particular process for filling the Board of Education vacancy. Board policy 1020, resignations and vacancies does require the following. All vacancies and membership of the Johnson County Board of Education be filled by appointment by remaining members of Board. Board shall advertise vacancy to provide notice to citizens and to request interested persons to submit state of interest. Voting to fill vacancies shall be conducted by same procedure as for election of board officers. Person appointed to fill vacancies shall serve for the remainder of an unexpired term of office. Appointment of individual to fill the vacant seat is not connected by law or policy to candidacy for or outcomes of recent election of Board of Education. With that being said, I would like to propose the following process. Narrowing our field down to five candidates based upon some information you'll see in your packet. Board members select up to five of the individuals who have submitted statement of interest, see the proposed form, to be considered for the vacancy. Board members cannot weigh their votes for individuals. For example, board member cannot vote for, cannot cast five votes for one candidate or cast three votes for one candidate and two for a second. If the field cannot be narrowed to three candidates after board members' votes are counted, example, if we have three candidates who receive six votes and another four receive five votes, the Board can either grant interviews to the smallest group of candidates who have received the most votes, for example, the candidates who all received six votes, and the four candidates who received five votes, but not the additional eight candidates who received four votes. Or we can go to another round to cast votes so that we can narrow the field down to three to interview at the end of the process to consider a smaller pool. And once we have this smaller pool, we would then move to an interview process that we would determine later tonight as far as the date and time. So I'll entertain a motion to accept this process.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to accept the process as read.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor.
A sec.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Any questions or concerns?
Yes, sir. And I understand the process you are proposing and the legal ramifications and things you have outlined. A lot of times in local government, when you don't have a policy or legal guidance, you typically revert back to what is common practice or precedence. Now, I understand that we can come in here and set up a new process today and then come back and do it tomorrow. But I think it's important just to point out reference that many times in government, you have situations where there's no written policy. There's no written directive legally says you will do it this way. However, you always lean on, well, what have we done in the past? And I just think that instead of foregoing a long process, we'd be selling ourselves short if we didn't go ahead and at least discuss making a decision tonight. Now, I realize we've got a motion in a second, and I won't be contrary just to be contrary. But I would like to point that out. I remember back in 2016, when Mr. Wooton was the chairman, there seemed to be a little bit of a expedited sense that we needed to fill this board. So with the decisions we have to make coming up where things could be a four-three, three-four vote, there needs to be some sense of urgency to fill this seat. And I don't say that there's not a sense of urgency, but precedents and common practice should certainly play a part when you're dealing with local government and decisions like this. But thank you.
I appreciate your input, Mr. Johnson. And I've done some research too, and I believe there's been a couple of other times they have been appointments. And if it was close to the election cycle, anybody correct me if I'm wrong, but the information I received was that they didn't even choose somebody that was in that election cycle. Unfortunately, 2017, fortunately for me, that process was a little bit different. And I submitted my application just like other eight individuals did, of which three ran in that, in that election, me being one of them. But I never questioned their, y'all's decision on how you did, you know, your process or anything of that nature. But was very appreciative. But also I knew that I was going to be running in the 2018 election regardless of the appointment process. So, but, you know, as far as the timeliness and expedition, expediting this, my goal is to have somebody seated by the March elect, March board meeting. It may be a little bit more drawn out process than we did in the 2016 slash 2017, right after you and Ms. Grant got on. But that is our, that is my goal is to make sure that that happens.
I would agree. We need this process to happen. I think we all, I certainly feel we need to get this done in a timely manner, yeah.
And, you know, unfortunately, that would be a couple of more special sessions. But if that's the pleasure of the Board, we'll move in those directions as we talk about that further tonight. So we've got a motion in a second to approve the process as stated. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to interject and just ensure, because I heard some different numbers, that the pending motion is for board members to select up to five individuals to narrow the field, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries six zero. At this time, we have a form, I believe everybody's, everybody has a form in front of them that for the selection of candidates for the Board of Education vacancy. You can select up to five candidates from the list above. And then we just print our names, sign it and date it. And Ms. Wecker, sir, will be receiving these from us. And at that point in time, Ms. Wecker, sir, will take these and tally these up along with our board attorney and come back. And once we give these in, we'll take a small recess for them to take care of that at that time. So at this time, we'll select those five, up to those five candidates. Okay, we're back in live stream. Mara, are you with us? Okay, Mara, we're back.
All right. Mr. Chairman, the field of 31 has been narrowed through voting to a field of seven top vote getters. So at this point, you articulated a process before that the Board approved by which it could go in one of two directions to narrow a field larger than five to a field of five. You indicated per my notes, and correct me if I got this wrong, that the Board could elect to grant interviews to the smallest group of candidates who receive the most votes. For example, if three candidates received six votes and four candidates received five votes, then those seven candidates would each receive or be granted an interview. Or if you have a pool broader than five candidates, board members could be informed of those seven candidates and cast another round of votes to narrow that field of seven or eight or nine, whatever it is, to the narrower field of five, so that you ultimately leave this meeting with a to the narrower field of five, so that you ultimately leave this meeting with a pool of only five candidates. Because the board did not specify which of those options it wished to take, I advise that the board elect one of those processes now, and then we can move forward based on the field of seven.
Okay, so we just make sure I understand, Mara. We could do one of two things. One is we could take the top seven and grant those interviews, or we could take the seven individuals that are the top vote-getters and do a second round of votes to narrow the field down to preferably three, but possibly five.
That's correct. Yeah, that's correct. Those were the two options outlined in the motion that was adopted by the board.
Okay, so what is the pleasure of the board at this time? We have a motion to take the seven individuals and revote to narrow the field down to potentially three. We have a second on that. Any questions or discussion?
Are we continuing to vote for the top five? I mean, no more than five? Is it the same?
Mara, we've got seven, so do we still go select up to five?
So you've got seven. The prior motion that was adopted by the board was to narrow the field of 31 to five. So departing from that at this point would be inconsistent with the prior directive to narrow the pool to five.
Okay. Okay.
So we're allowed to vote up to five, right?
That's correct. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? You good? Motion carries six zero. So we'll now we'll get another list. You're gonna let us know the six... The what? Okay, we'll take a break at this time. Okay, we'll take a break at this time. At this time, Ms. Weckeser will pull, pass out another vote of candidates to us. Again, you can select up to five, and we will return those to her when you complete it. At this time, we'll take a recess while they tally our votes. Okay, we're back in open. I think Ms. Weckeser has tallied the votes with Mara, and we'll go from there. Okay, the top five, and I'll read off how many votes they had. Mr. Al Byrd had five votes. Brian Jenkins had three votes. Mr. Robert O'Neal Jr. had four votes. Jeff Robinson had three votes. And Dr. Chuck Williams had five votes. So they're our top five. At this time, I will, would discuss our process now as far as date and time.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the board authorize our chair to develop interview questions for the candidates, the candidates to be interviewed, as well as set a date for that, for those interviews.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and second for authorization of the board chair to draft the interview questions, as well as a date and time. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, again, I would be completely remiss if I didn't say this. It's seemingly unfair and almost tragic that the fifth place person, and I'm at a loss for words for once in my life here in this boardroom, but without calling his name, he didn't get consideration. I think that is not cool at all, for lack of better words. He's worked, the people had confidence in him, and we're not even giving him an interview. And I understand, we established a process, but something has to be said for voter confidence and the tens of thousands of people that voted for that individual. I mean, I'm at a loss for words, and I feel like, I mean, I feel like we failed in some senses by not picking him.
Any other questions or comments?
Listen, um, excuse, oops. A point of order on our first motion, were we trying to get down to three today? Was that, was that part of the first motion?
I think it was, we were gonna select up to five. Mara, we were going down to five, is that correct?
That's, that's correct. That's, that's the point for which I asked clarification when the motion was pending.
Okay, thank you, just.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed?
No.
Motion carries five to one. So at this time, I would like for everybody to check their schedules for Monday evening at 5:00 to start conducting these meetings. We would like to have all five of them conducted in one night, is my goal. Does anybody have any reservation about that? All of us taking care of these interviews in one night.
Twenty-second?
Yes, sir. Monday, the 22nd.
What time?
Starting at 5:00 PM. Ms. Weckeser, can you reach out to these candidates tomorrow and set these times up? What do you think, if I share every 45 minutes?
Thirty to 45.
So we'll have them, first one at 5:00, then we'll move from there, and if all of them can be on site so that if we get finished earlier, we can go ahead and move to the next candidate would be my recommendation.
Do we need to vote on this recommendation?
Mara, since that was in the motion and second from Mr. Wooton for me to set the date and time, as well as the interview questions, do we need to make a motion for that?
I would go ahead and make a motion for the date and time, and as I understand it, the motion adopted and first promoted by Mr. Wooton was for you to draft questions, and those questions can certainly be discussed and adopted formally by the board at the beginning of its next meeting to conduct the interviews.
Okay, so at this time, I'll entertain a motion for Monday at 5:00 PM.
They're moved.
Motion by Ms. Sessom, second by Mr. Carroll. Any questions? If not, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion carries six-zero. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Carroll, second by Ms. Andrews. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries six-zero.